I'll call us to order. Before we get started, let me read the emergency evacuation procedures. In the event of an emergency evacuation, an alarm will sound. Everyone should exit the building by way of the nearest stairwell in a safe and effective manner. If the nearest stairwell is blocked by smoke, use the other stairwell. Do not use the elevator. Once you have reached the main floor, follow the exit signs to exit the building and quickly proceed away from the building. Please be mindful of others evacuating and of emergency vehicles. If you had the minutes in your packets, do we have any corrections or additions to the minutes? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Motion and second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Before we start into the agenda items, we've got one addition to the agenda to be added. Packet or memo and a plat that was in front of you when you came in. Do I have a motion to add the replat of the Clayton Davis and Russell Heppertly property off of Boagunle to the agenda?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed like sign, motion carries. We have no site plans tonight. Preliminary plats.
I've got item B1, the revised preliminary plat for the Dutchie subdivision by Design Concepts Corporation off of Meadow Road. And that section of Meadow Road is actually Loudoun County Road, but the property is all in Blount County. There are three large tracts and a remainder greater than five acres to be served by a 50-foot common driveway easement. I will briefly state for planning commissioners that either we're not here or don't remember that the Dutchie was approved in 2011 as a three-track subdivision off of a 50-foot private road. The main change here with some administrative things is going to be the standard of the road from an 18-foot wide gravel road to a 10-foot wide common driveway. And we will present the information in the staff analysis to the proponents so that they have instructions on what to build. The outstanding items to be completed are on page six. I'm going to read them completely, put them into the record. Number one, all instructions in this staff analysis, including a pre-construction meeting. That pre-construction meeting will be with the project representatives and their contractors. Copy of the erosion control plan and SWPPP permit, that's the storm water pollution prevention plan permit. A copy of any correspondence from the state regarding the sinkholes, that was in the original write-up as well. We will need an updated road grading plan that includes tile locations and road profile information from the project engineer and the construction of all improvements. That's item number one. Number two will be a copy of the POA documentation to be supplied to staff for review prior to final plat submission. Do you have anything to add to that, John? That's it.
Do we have any questions or comments, discussion?
Question, Doug, did you say this is going to be a private drive?
It's going to be a common drive. Yes, it's private.
So they're on the bill, how many, what will be the limit of off of this drive for what they're going to be?
With the status of the common drive, there can be the remainder which actually owns the strip to Meadow Road in Loudoun County. That would be the remainder track, would be one. There could be four additional lots. So there's three here, three tracks shown here, they could get one more.
The right-of-way is, Gerald, did you have, I'm sorry, did you have a comment?
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
It was proved as a private road.
Yes.
That's when we proved it in '11. Now they just want to go to the common driveway.
Right, this is a revised.
Difference in the construction of the common driveway compared to the private road is difference in construction.
Yes, sir.
But the way I read, it still will be a private road, but it'd be used as come road, but it would be built as a private road in order to handle all the traffic when they go back to the lots, right?
Let me see if I can explain this. It was approved as a private road, which has a cross-section, which is 18-foot wide gravel surface.
Right, 18-foot.
The new cross-section on the common driveway, and I use that term because that's an actual definition we use, a common driveway is still private. It has the status of a driveway, but limits the number of lots to four. And you can build a narrower drive. It's a 10-foot gravel cross-section. In the future, the owner's going to retain the right, that's why there's still 50-foot right-of-way they're putting in. They're going to retain the right to put an 18-foot wide gravel road so they can go beyond four lots in the future.
Okay. And then on the, this is going to be a gravel road?
It'll be approved as a gravel road. If they do anything beyond that in the future, that'll be once the planning.
With the two-inch rock?
Yes.
That we passed just recently, before they would have had to have four inches?
Well, a private road, I mean, when it was originally approved was with a six-inch surface.
Right.
The common driveway would have been four, but it's going to be two.
Going to drop that down to two.
If that's confusing, we'll go.
So all that, they know, okay.
Commissioner McClellan?
Surveyors got this proper line down the center line of this road. If that does come where they want to develop it into something, is that not going to be an issue with the other landowners? Should they not?
That's typical for old private roads and common driveways. We allow them to do it either way. They can either do what Bruce is saying, well, they plaid the lot into the center and there's an easement across the 25 feet onto their property on either side. Or they can plaid out the entire 50-foot and all the property owners can own it in common. We've had that conversation with Ricky Younger. We understand this is the way they prefer to do it.
Okay. Was this the most recent plat that was submitted?
Yes.
Okay. Because it has a date of February 14.
He's still updated.
Okay. But it does go to the center line of the road, then?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Has anybody checked to see if that, if the lots that were already sold? There was a violation of our subdivision regulation here. I just want to get a little clarification. Lot tracks four and track six were sold and we didn't have a final plat. And they're trying to correct that by putting in this, getting a final plat. So we're holding off on enforcement on that. But there was some question as to whether the lots went to the center line of the road or not. Has anybody confirmed that? If you could identify yourself as a representative of the plat.
Glenna Overton, attorney for Design Concepts. We're in the process of defining that. I believe that the deed description does go to the center of the road.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure that we, because we had another plat come in that was different.
But we will verify that. If not, we'll do a modification of the deed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to mention one more thing before you take any action. If you do approve the revised, if you do approve the revised preliminary plat with the outstanding items to be completed, it will be for 24 months from this timeframe. We're going to look at it as a completely new plat. Otherwise, the previous plat expires next February anyway, and then they'll be back in February.
It is my understanding that this will be done before the end of December. So that's going to be kind of irrelevant. They need to take care of some issues with the two properties they've already sold.
Commissioner Kirby?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do we need to put that in your recommendations of finding out about the center line of the road?
I think they can do it either way.
I think we just need to confirm that and conform to whatever was actually transferred by deed. I don't want to make the plat conflict with any deeds that might have been made.
So we're okay with this right here?
Yes.
I'm making a recommendation, will you accept with all the staff recommendations?
All right, we have a motion to approve with staff recommendations. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comments, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed like sign, motion carries. I didn't, I'm sorry, before when we added the replat, I guess the replat should be under miscellaneous items, so no, we'll cover it after we cover the one that was in the agenda. Replat, there are no final plats tonight. Miscellaneous items, replat of lots 38, 48, 49, and 67 of TP Village in Top of the World Community, variance request to the minimum lot size. Doug, you got that, or John, you got it?
I've got it.
It's fine.
If you want to look at the plat, you can see pretty much what they want to do. They own the four lots, they built a house in the center of it. It's kind of hard to see on here, but where it says Omej Drive, that's actually Omega Drive. That goes through the center of their property. That's kind of like we just talked about a second ago, Bruce. The other road is above, it says Keepsake Drive. They just want to simply remove the lot lines. This is a private development, so there's no dedication. These are very small lots. There's still a variance being requested because the new lot, 38R, as you see, is a total of 4.55 acres. .455 acres, which is 19,819 square feet. And our regulations require 30,000 square feet outside of any area of development hindrance. See, it says, "Staff notes precedent in granting blanket variance to allow combination of lots with the assumption that a combination would result in an improved situation. Approval of the combination with variances may be appropriate in this case." You've done it routinely at this point. This plat does fall under that precedent and would be appropriate for approval with variances, subject to required certifications. And as I understand, are there any zoning variances that would be required?
I'm aware of the plan. No.
This is one that we changed, modified, different situation?
Yeah, I've actually looked at that one.
Okay, that's it, that's all I have. I just want to make sure that there was no variances required by the BZA.
Commissioner McClellan? Just to verify that these weren't public roads, I called the highway department today and they aren't. Do you know who does maintenance on these particular roads or anything?
No, sir.
Are you comfortable with just that 40-foot roadway easement note for any kind of maintenance that that road might require?
Yeah, there's some.
Without putting in some kind of maintenance agreement?
Well, now there's too many other owners up there. This is an old, these were old campsites turned into cabin lots. And the history goes way back. I don't even know who built the subdivision or the lots, but I think the note that he's got on there is probably, you know, I don't even know if they can enforce that. To put any additional restrictions on their maintenance regime would probably not benefit
Mr. Kirby?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is this an environmentalist thing? Have these lots been combined in order to handle the septic fields and stuff?
There's already a septic field there.
I know, but when you got?
I think they do it for different reasons. I didn't ask in this particular case. A lot of times they just, they don't want the separate tax bills or they refinance and the mortgage company wants it on one lot.
Okay.
And it's already, they already own it, it's already there. They're just trying to clean it up a little bit.
We're going to end up with how many square foot out of the four lots?
19,800.
19,800.
800, yes, sir.
Did environmentalists people see involved in this?
It's already there, they review it. Basically, Gary will make a statement saying that if it's not a net detriment to the plat or to what they're doing on the ground, then it's actually an improvement and he'll sign off on it.
Can I speak to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
I was actually with Gary. He went up there and evaluated this and was fine with it because you're taking, was there three or four lots? And you're just making one big lot out of it. So it's making the situation better from a septic standpoint.
Well, we just proved one about three or four meetings back the same way. And my question was, if we're combining four lots, we want to make sure, are we coming up with one big lot? Is that for its tax purposes and stuff? I know we're getting into another thing. We're combining, combining four lots into one, which will be built one lot according to this, is 38R.
Right.
And so that will be handled through the tax people and all that stuff.
Yeah, that'll go through the process.
Because one big lot is worth more than those three little lots.
I don't know.
I mean, I'm just, yes and no. Okay. So you all don't know any problems?
We think it's improving the situation.
That's what Bruce asked you and so forth?
I think it's an improvement to the situation.
We would have signed off on it if it was 30,000 square feet.
Right, absolutely.
Because that meets our standard. It doesn't meet our standard, so technically we can't sign off on it. That's why it's before you to approve it with the variance.
So the variance, we want to, we just want to prove the difference in the square footage and that's what we're doing.
Well, actually, on these, we grant blanket variance to allow the combination with the assumption that it is an improvement of an existing situation.
Well, that's what I was talking about, environmentalists, it has to be. So I make a recommendation where you step with your recommendations.
All right, we have a motion to approve the replat with a variance to the lot size being less than the standard. The replat is an improvement of an existing situation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second? Any further questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed like sign, motion carries. With that said, we'll address the replat of the Davis Heppertly, which was the addition to the agenda.
Yeah, the replat of the Clayton Davis and Russell Heppertly property off of Boagunle Road. There are two lots with county road frontage. Again, there's a variance request to the minimum lot size. If you'll look at the plat, I'll talk you through it. There's a residence on lot one, and then a second residence on lot two. If you look at lot two, you'll see a dashed line around the residence that has a pool area next to it. That dashed line is actually the lot as it exists. That's the current lot of record for that house. And their pool actually sits on the neighbor's property. What they want to do is basically correct that situation, have each house on an individual lot, with the owner of lot one having their sheds on their property and the owner of lot two having their pool on their property. And I was also told today by the surveyor that they've actually confirmed that by the way these lots are drawn, they will contain their own septic systems for the first time. So that's a good thing. Let me see, the lot one contains a total of 25,101 square feet and lot two contains 27,209 square feet. Subdivision regulations require a minimum of 30,000 square feet per lot on public water. That's the variance situation. I wrote here, "Any variances should be conditional on the approval of the Environmental Health Department." I did talk to Mr. Ferguson about it. Once again, he stated that this was an improvement to the existing situation. This replat does not need to gain any zoning variances since the zoning regulations were amended to allow such a division with existing houses to proceed with the vision of the property. And that's not true. I just said something untrue.
Yeah, that's my fault. I discussed this with Doug and for some reason I thought this was a, two houses on a single piece of land. And I didn't catch that that was a smaller lot that's being expanded at the expense of reducing the other lot. So that provision in the zoning doesn't apply. So this, I think, Roger, since one's being reduced down below, minimum lot size would have to go through a variance process through zoning, wouldn't it? You're expanding one lot and reducing the other.
Similar to what we did.
Similar to what we had before.
Yeah, we had a month or two ago.
And Doug, Doug was mirroring what I thought I said by misunderstanding it. So I'll take the responsibility for all that. But it will have to go through zoning variance.
All right, so we would be approving the replat and approving the variance from our standpoint, but it will still have to go through the BZA for a variance on the existing lot being reduced.
There's also two outstanding items to be completed. I just read them into the record real quick. A consideration of the variance request by the planning commission and submission of a final plat with certifications, including the Environmental Health Department's signature.
Commissioner McClellan?
I have a motion to approve with variances.
Do I have a second? Okay, we have a second.
We have a second, too, Dave.
Subject, that the motion needs to be subject to the BZA approving a variance on the primary lot, lot one. Is that okay with you? It's okay with Commissioner McClellan? Roger, I guess I have a question for you from a regular, historically, I watched this house being built on the corner. And it was, to the best of my knowledge, it was built after zoning was in place and I think building permits were required.
You'll have to excuse me, I'm not familiar with the property.
And you said this, the record, the plats were not, they had never been through any process.
Not that I'm aware of. Mike Ogles here, he can speak to it. No, I don't, I'm not sure what the situation, I think they just had deeds.
The little bitty tract that's about 10,000 square feet was that size back in, at least as far back as '78. So that little lot's existed that long.
Okay. So it was, that's the way it was originally?
Yeah.
Platted out?
Yeah, without a plat.
All right. Because I wonder where that lot, the small one, came from? Because I couldn't believe it on.
It came prior to the swimming pool, that I'm pretty much sure of. Because the pool's a lot newer than everything else. But at one point in time, I think one guy owned both tracks, still on two separate deeds, but he didn't care if he built a pool across the line because he owned both lots. But since then, it's all changed hands and went through a foreclosure. And now they're trying to get this straightened out.
Okay. Yeah, I watched it through the foreclosure process and I couldn't believe when I saw what the size of the lot was. And I said, how in the world did that happen? Okay, we have a motion to approve the replat with a variance and also subject to variance by the BZA for reduction in size of lot one. Everybody understand? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed like sign, motion carries. John, long-range planning?
First item is the referral back by county commission of the proposed Ridge Top and Hillside regulations. Commissioner Wright and myself have sat down and talked about some changes in this. The ad hoc committee has not changed, we just couldn't find a date that would work for us on that. And so it'd be appropriate to defer this item to the next regular meeting in September.
Do I have a motion to defer? Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed like sign, motion carries. Proposed regulation of electronic message center signs, Roger.
This comes back to you from discussions we've had before about the electronic message centers. And basically what I've done is I've taken what Marville did to their regulations to accommodate this type of message center. And that is adding a definition for EMCs or electronic message center signs. A type of, and that is, a type of changeable copy sign that uses a bank of lights or other lighting technology that can be electronically altered to form words, letters, figures, symbols, pictures, or patterns to convey a message without altering the sign face. An EMC sign shall only be used as a marquee or message center on premise business sign and shall be attached to a pylon, monument, or wall. And the second part would be a change to section 7.5 I-4. Currently, it reads, "No sign may contain or be illuminated by flashing or intermittent lights or lights of changing degrees of intensity." The proposed wording would include that with a section I-4A, which it would say, "No sign may contain or be illuminated by flashing or intermittent lights of changing degrees of intensity, except as provided below," which would be, "A, electronic message center signs permitted as changeable copy or premise business signs shall be permitted, subject to the following. Shall be only, shall be allowed only in the C commercial zone, shall be limited to one display per parcel or lot. Shall hold a constant message for a minimum of 60 seconds and shall have a minimum of five seconds between intervals, except signs indicating time, date, or weather conditions. And shall be at least 100 feet from any residential use or residentially zoned property as measured on a straight line from the nearest property line of said residential use or residentially zoned property to the electronic message center sign, whether on a building or on That's basically just taking what Marville had and adopting it, adapting it to our zoning
And then 7.5 I-4, that comes out? That was on page six of your agenda?
Yes, that would be replaced with what's on page four.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we have any questions or discussion? Commissioner McClellan?
It's not a big deal to me, but I've noticed some of these that popped up in Marville recently. And that constant message for a minimum of 60 seconds, I don't believe that's the case because I see them changed. I don't sit there and time them, but they seem like they change more often than 60 seconds. But it doesn't matter to me.
I think maybe what you've seen is a time and weather sign. And they do change, I think they have a provision for a specific time and weather sign in Marville that we don't have. And they change quite a lot more because you get the time, then you get the weather, and then you get the time, get the weather, and in a lot greater frequency than 60 seconds. That might be what you're seeing. But I think they've defined a different class of sign for that.
Roger, does that include the billboards that have the moving, the moving billboards that change face? Is that also included in that?
It wouldn't, but billboards, you can't put any new billboards up in the county other than the ones that are grandfathered in, unless they're in the city limits. But outside the incorporated limits, they're not permissible.
Coming back to what you just said, John, there must have been something more or three under 4A. Line item three says, "Shall hold a constant message for a minimum of 60 seconds and shall have a minimum of five seconds between intervals, except signs indicating time, date, or weather conditions." Do we need some limits on that or? There is an exception there that says it doesn't have to hold for 60 seconds. John, do you think they had something else that?
Those are real simple messages. I think these are, these are things that are used by churches to advertise vacation Bible school. And what you want to do is to kind of, and they're bigger. Time and date and weather usually does time, date, weather in sequence. And it's a smaller sign, a bigger sign. Our message center is something that holds a sign or holds a message for a longer period of time. And the 60 seconds is just so, you don't get around that and start flashing five-second big messages that then distract you if you're driving along. You're trying to read the whole message and you start causing an accident. Weather and time, you can read that in a click.
Okay, got it. Commissioner Cameron?
Can you tell me how many requests we've had for this action? Is this something that is being pushed quite frequently or?
Through the years, there hadn't been that many. Through the years, there hadn't been that many, but it's something that's getting to be more and more popular. And I've had two requests since we've started talking about it. And the reason I brought it to you is because I had three requests within a matter of, I think it was two weeks. And they were kind of, kind of pushing, and they were from sign companies that do this all over.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Do I have a motion to send this on for consideration to the County Commission? Or do we want to kill it?
I wish to send it, though.
All right, we have a motion to send it to the County Commission, which would have to go through a public hearing and have their action. All right, and a second by David.
Just a technical matter. If you send it on, you need to send it with some sort of recommendation, so-
With recommendation to approve.
Okay.
And a second. Any further questions? All those in favor, motion to send it on to the County Commission with recommendation for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
No.
Motion carries.
Just have a couple on staff reports. First, and this is just for your information, is a Plan East Tennessee livability report card. Just for your information, if you want to look through that, it's got quite a bit of information in it that applies to Blunt County also. Second is, I'm setting up a training for solid waste, recycling, and litter, and I discussed that with you at, I think, the last meeting or meeting before that. And we're looking at the last two weeks of September and the first two weeks of October on a Tuesday or a Wednesday morning. Does anybody have any major conflict with having a training on a Tuesday or a Wednesday morning?
I can't do it Wednesday, but I can do it Tuesday.
So, Tuesday, okay. Anybody else have a conflict?
Let us know early, no.
I will. We're setting it up right now. I'm trying to coordinate with both the Solid Waste Authority and with Keep Blunt Beautiful. Solid waste would be, of course, the solid waste part of that, and the recycling and litter would be the Keep Blunt Beautiful. And it would be about, you know, two and a half, three hours in the morning. It'll be out in the field. It's not going to be a sitting in a classroom type situation. We're going to be traveling around.
I'd prefer it to be in September versus the first week of October.
Does the second week of October have a difficulty also?
Second week of October's fine. I'll be on vacation the first of them.
Okay. Yeah, that, well, I'm trying to, I told them, the Solid Waste Authority Board, we brought this up, and they want to have a tour of the new facility. There's, there's new things out of that facility that they would like to see. And I sit on, along with Commissioner Kirby, and they were interested in doing a tour. And I just brought up that, you know, we can make this a planning, a training also, and give credit for you all. And so, we're trying to set it up, but I told them I wasn't going to do it while it was hot. That was in the hottest portion of the year that we had that meeting, and I just said, "We're going to wait until it gets cooler."
Either any of those dates are fine with me, John, so.
Well, I'll be sending out, we'll explore this, and I'll send out a notification on that. Even if you can't hit this one, and I hope you can, I will be offering training opportunities on an individual or small group basis for those of you who are going to scramble at the very end of the year to try to get your, your training hours in. Most of you, I think, have gotten them. And Marlene gave me a list, and I left it in the office. You got another one?
I think so.
Okay, but anyway, we'll be sending out notices to everyone individually about your training hour situation. Some of you have more than enough, and I would encourage you to keep on with these trainings. But if you find that you're short at the end of the year, we will have individual or small group opportunities in my office. And at various times, it's going to be very flexible on time, so we'll take care of you. Yeah. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies. We are adjourned.